Starting shortly. Mike Washington is in the...
Can't hear you.
Whoops. I'll try again. How's this?
Okay.
Okay. Mike Washington is in the diversity meeting and he will not be attending the public hearing, so. And it is 6:30 and we have our admin committee here, so I call this meeting to order. Roxanne, would you read the call of the meeting, please?
The Leger Town Council will conduct a virtual video conference public hearing on Wednesday, August 26, 2020, at 6:30 PM to receive comments and recommendations regarding a proposed amendment to ordinance 300-029, formerly ordinance number 34, an ordinance regarding control of alcoholic beverages at Town of Leger facilities. Interested persons may submit written communications to towncouncil@ledgerct.org. Please join the meeting from your computers, tablet, or smartphone. For the video conference and draft ordinance will be provided on the town's website at www.ledgerct.org, located under the Agenda and Minutes tab, dated at Leger, Connecticut, the 13th day of August 2020. For the Leger Town Council, Lindsey Davis, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, who's giving the presentation?
I am.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Okay, the purpose, okay, first of all, this draft I have is dated February the 3rd. It was forwarded by the admin committee, which included Attorney Bartman's recommendations for a public hearing on the 24th of March. Of course, that didn't happen because of COVID. So, the purpose of the ordinance is to control the use, consumption, sale of alcoholic liquor on any town or school property, and it lists all of them. And then it defines alcohol. So, it's any town facility that is under the control of the town funded directly or indirectly by the town. Right now, it shall be unlawful for any person to have in their possession or consume any beverage, alcoholic beverage, in a town facility. So, what the ordinance provides now is that if, I'll give you an example. I've officiated at many weddings on the grounds of the Nathan Lester House. And usually, it's a young couple with a few relatives, and they get married on the grounds. It's usually very beautiful flowers out, etc. And after the ceremony, they usually do pictures, and a number of times, they have said, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could have some champagne? So, now, this ordinance would allow that to happen. They would have to get a written permission from the agency, shouldn't say agent, the department that has administrative control over the Nathan Lester House. In that case, it's the Historic District Commission. So, they would get a permission from them, and then they would need written permission from the Chief of Police. The ordinance lists the names of the facilities, the location, and who has administrative control over that particular piece of property. Now, if you want to sell, this ordinance does provide for sale of liquor, you have to get a temporary liquor permit, and that comes from the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection. And again, you would need authorization from the agency with administrative control and from the police department, and you would have to fill out this temporary liquor permit, which is included in the back. If you are a professional caterer, and if you are serving liquor, you would have to get a caterer's liquor permit and provide insurance and list the town as an additional insured on all forms of insurance. And the caterer shall also provide proof of liquor liability cover, coverage as part of the application. It is unlawful for any person to sell or serve beer, or wine, or alcoholic beverages to anyone under the age of 21. If caught, you could be fined up to $1,500 and imprisoned for up to 18 months. In addition, to the state imposed fines, any person violating this ordinance shall be fined not more than $100. That's kind of the summary of the ordinance.
Were there any written comments that have come in?
Not that I saw.
Wait, there was some questions that I forwarded on to the council. It was an email earlier in the week.
I'm sorry, Linda, we did get an email. I didn't get it until 3 o'clock this afternoon from Pam Ball, who is the Farmers Market Manager.
Can you address those questions? Because I think that this...
Well, here's, my question is, are we serving, not we, the town, but are vendors serving liquor at the farmer's market?
No, there is some sampling, of course, not during COVID, but there is some sampling which is allowed by the state, but there is no serving.
Okay, all right. I wasn't aware of that, because she kind of...
The question, I guess, was, in that the vendor and the beer purser, there's two vendors, basically. There's one that sells beer, although not this year, and one that sells wine. They have all the permits from the state. Are you asking for the farmer's market to also have permits?
Do they? I'm sorry, they do have permits?
They all are permits from the state, and the question...
Liquor permits, are you talking about temporary liquor permits?
I don't know if they're temporary, but they serve all over the state, so they're definitely liquor permits. And the question is, does the farmer's market have to have permits in addition?
Hey, Linda, this is, you know, from my perspective.
Yes.
Looking at the way the ordinance is worded and the questions that Ms. Ball had provided, I don't believe that the farmer's market itself would be required to file the application to the town and to the Chief of Police, but the vendors, when they sell alcohol at the farmer's market, would be required to get the written permission from the agency who has, in this case...
Consumer Protection.
Yes, okay.
Different issue about the, they have to get their liquor permit from the Department of Consumer Protection. That's a different issue here, anyway.
Okay.
The issue is, is the farmer's market, in my opinion, doesn't need to, but the vendors need to have their liquor permit from the state, as well as file the, get the written permission from whoever the agency is who has administrative control of the property. In this case, the farmer's market would be Park and Recs, and also have the written authorization from the Chief of Police to comply with the ordinance. But the farmer's market itself does not.
Okay, thank you.
But the vendors do. Okay, yeah, okay. But so what you're saying at this point is, no one is selling beer or wine at the farmer's market? That was vague in her question.
They are selling, yes.
Yes, they are.
They're selling, but not for consumption on site.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not serving alcohol.
But they still, in accordance with the ordinance, once enacted, and they would have to file the rest of the ordinance paperwork, so to say, that get the permission from the agency who has administrative control and written permission from the Chief of Police.
Okay.
That's up to the vendor, not the farmer's market.
Right, right.
Thank you. Clear it up for Pam, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll open up to public comments. Oh, John?
You're on mute, John.
I'm here, go ahead.
John, you're on mute.
Work.
Okay.
Now you're there.
All right, a couple of comments just to add to it. Point clarification, Section 200 definitions, town facilities funded directly or indirectly by the Town of Leger, that would also include the Gales Ferry Firehouse. We don't own it, but we pay rent, so that's an indirect form of funding. Just for clarification.
Okay.
Also, too, this ordinance does not allow a couple buddies to go down to Erickson Park and have a picnic after work with a few beers, just for bridal showers and things of that nature.
Correct.
Just, you know, families that want to have a few drinks with a picnic or whatever.
Right, you would have to get permission ahead of time.
Right, go through the whole procedure. Section 5, the last paragraph, line 2, days is missing after seven. Created seven days, there's no days in there, that's missing.
Where are you, John? Where's that again?
Under definition, Section 5, line 2, down towards the bottom, that paragraph.
Seven days.
I got it.
Okay, you got that, Roxanne? I didn't get it, okay.
Okay, and in Section 7, it speaks to General Statute 30-86, subsection 2. The fine is $3,500, not $1,500. So, with that being said, should we just list the statute and not the fine? In case the fine gets changed and we're not aware of it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all right, love.
Paul? Paul?
Oh, I'm okay to speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Paul Mogul, Colonel Leger Highway, just down the street from y'all. I'm looking at the timeframes required for each step of the process. There's a 30-day timeframe, and then a 20-day timeframe, and then a seven-day timeframe to get back to folks. So, that puts us at about two months, actually, prior to the event, when you can actually get to sell your product or serve your product at this site. This seems an awful long timeframe from a business point of view, considering you only have three or four months of warm weather outside. In other words, spontaneity of the event is sort of negated with this long timeframe. Second factor here is that Leger is sitting in the midst of three large tourist areas. One is westwardly to Mystic, tourist area. Second is Foxwoods, and the third is Mohegan's. Together, they bring in five to seven million people to come and spend money here. People who have disposable income are a rare commodity these days. We would love to have more people come to Leger to spend their money here. Would help Leger's people prosper, whether they're farmers or business folks or government folks. Doesn't matter. The thing is, the longer the process, the less spontaneity we're able to capture. And what we, it is a beautiful place. It has a lot to offer. Let's make it a little more open and flexible to agritourism, for example, or to a wedding, or to a meeting, or a wine festival, or a beer festival. These things would have to be planned out a year in advance, or at least several months in advance. The summertime window we have, just a thought there, you might want to condense the timeframes into a little tighter web, so that's more spontaneity, and you can reach out to a bigger group of folks. Just wanted to pick that out. Unless you have some questions, because I do have a permit to pour offsite in Connecticut.
Can I comment to Paul?
Yes, go ahead.
So, one of the reasons why the timeframe was established the way it was is because the boards that would have to request permission from don't meet in any, you know, in other words, they would have to call a special meeting to expedite anything. So, in accord with a regular meeting schedule, if somebody were to file a permit right after a meeting happened, and it's 30 days before even the board who has administrative control could possibly make, it depends if they meet once a month, that you're not going to get approval from that board or commission for at least a month until the next regular meeting, unless they choose to hold a special meeting just to discuss that one item.
Will they then look at an administrative quorum to sign off on something like this?
It would have to be a public meeting.
Just as, well, it has to be a public, quorum of public meeting.
It has to be a noticed public meeting. So, the reason why the timeline was set up is because some of these boards and commissions only meet once a month. So, the timeline is set up based upon, part of the timeline is based upon the board and commission schedules of when their regularly scheduled meeting dates are. So, it could be earlier, it could be early depending on when the application is received, but you know that that's why, that's why the timeline, because we don't want to have an owneress on the town to go hold a bunch of special meetings just to approve whether somebody can serve alcohol on town property.
Would it be possible, then, to condense it into just the police department and the town council or town?
No, we ran through that a month at a time. The governing body, whoever has administrative control, needs to know what's going on on the property that they have control of.
Rational, I understand.
Thank you.
I just agree, but I understand. I see where you're coming from.
Bill, did you have your hand up at some point?
Yeah, I have a question, Linda, for John. I think, John, I heard you say that...
I hope our connection gets better for the next meeting.
Are you guys having trouble hearing me? No, okay.
I can hear you.
So, John, okay, I think I heard you say that the Gales Ferry Fire Company...
Could you nod your head if you can hear me?
Yeah. So, Linda, your screen is frozen right now. I think it's your internet connection, and we just lost, now we can't see you.
If you, I don't know if you can hear me, would you consider turning off your video to see if that helps?
Okay, so I'm going to try again. John, you mentioned Gales Ferry Firehouse, the fact that the town rents it, so the town exercises some control over the Gales Ferry Firehouse. But I think that in the case of the room where they have Bingo, they rent that out, and I don't think the town would supersede that room because the party in the room is renting the use of that room. So, I don't see how the town would have control over that since Gales Ferry owns the building.
That would affect, if this orders would affect the firehouse as well, because the town does rent space from us.
Yeah, but the town, the town doesn't rent the Bingo Hall.
No, I get that, but I just was wondering if this would affect, because it's funded indirectly by the town, it is part of the firehouse, where the line is drawn.
Wouldn't it be the fire department's administrative control, though, to give permission anyways?
It would be.
I think going back to, hey, John, I think going back is that we, we, the town, although we lease the building for the use as a firehouse, we don't own the building. So, therefore, it's outside the town purview of what the Gales Ferry Fire Department decides to do with the building that they own.
Okay, so it's not funded indirectly by the town?
Not for the use or sale of alcohol in the, like, in the comment that Bill made, like, in the Bingo Hall. We just lease it as a firehouse to support the town. It's not indirectly funded to support any private activity that the firehouse owns, that they own the building, however they handle the lease of doing that for private events.
Okay, so that clears it up, kind of.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we lost Linda. I don't see her...
I think we lost, I think we lost Linda.
Yeah, I just texted her and I suggested she reboot her router. That's the only thing I can think of. Oh, she said she's on her iPad.
Well, the other thing she could do is she could just dial in, she could just do it from her phone.
Yeah.
You know, beyond, she could just be on verbal, you know...
I'll tell her that.
Do we have to wait for Linda? I have a question, too, that something wasn't clear in the administrative control portion. There's kind of a conflict between the farmer's market. It says that farmer's market is given permission. They don't have administrative control technically over the property. It's Park and Recs administrative control of the Town Green. So, would they need permission from both groups to have consumption on that site? Or are we, like, relinquishing control to the farmer's market during farmer's market events?
Good question. Well... Where does it say the farmer's market in the ordinance?
It lists, it has one of the town properties.
It says name of...
It's the last one, Farmer's Market.
In the chart, it has name of facility, location, and administrative control, which technically, the farmer's market's not a facility. The facility is Parks and Recs, it's under our jurisdiction.
Agreed. The farmer's market does not have administrative control of the property. So, I would think that in the case of, with the farmer's market, they would need to get permission from first Parks and Recs and then the farmer's market. Since ultimately, you, as the Parks and Recs, have ultimate authority over the property. That's my take.
It's listed, the farmer's market is listed in the ordinance as in Town Hall, quote, in quotes, Town Hall.
Yeah, but I think where Scott is referring to is that the location that they provide is the address of the Town Green. So, I think where you're thinking, hey, the conflict where the administrative control is established by the list of town-owned properties is the Parks and Recs Commission, not the farmer's market. So, the farmer's market, although they run the activity, don't have administrative control of the property.
It's under our facility holder pavilions listed under us already, so it's kind of, you know, a double...
Right. So, what Scott is saying, I think, is maybe the farmer's market should just come out of the table altogether, because they don't have administrative control over the property where they host the farmer's market each week.
Okay, we can do that.
And just so you guys know, we're not acting on this ordinance tonight anyway at the next, you know, at the council meeting after this public hearing, so, you know, there'll be an opportunity for probably admin to make some adjustments based on tonight's comments.
Yeah, one good thing I noticed is that the address, we officially have an address now for the whole pavilion. It was 7:40, but when they sold the school, they split it, and now it's 7:20 Colonel Leger Highway for the address.
Are there any other comments?
Are you back, Linda?
I don't think she is. I gave her some suggestions on how to dial in, and I would suggest that when we go into the town council meeting, we call in from a phone rather than try to use computer audio. And to do that, you can choose either computer audio or phone when you log in. And if you're in, if you actually accidentally get in using computer audio, you can go to the three little dots at the bottom of the screen, usually at the bottom of the screen. Look for the three little dots.
Oh, okay.
If you click on that, it'll give you the option to switch audio. And if you choose switch audio, then it'll give you the numbers to dial. And it's all the right numbers, the right password, meeting, and all that. So, your name will be associated with the computer login when you talk.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, where were we? Did we make, John, did you make it through the public hearing? Yes?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, when I call, I don't know what happened. I have never had problems on my iPad, but I don't have video on this, but I...
I don't have video on this, but I'll just use this for the next meeting as well. We're not in the next, we're not in the next meeting yet, right?
No, no.
We're at the public hearing, Linda, and it sounds like we're done with comments. I had asked, everyone shook their head, no more comments, so I think we'll stick to the end.
So, our public hearing has adjourned.
Thank you.
You're on a few minutes.
Yep.
See you in a few.